Deb, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. What was the bar?
Here I am.
Very good. There might be a note in there about time sheets not being submitted. They actually were submitted at the final.
Yeah, I know, and that had put through that said that some or.
Yeah, they were all very.
So.
And they were, I was speaking to people to say, you gotta get it in.
I think we need questions for everybody.
I think so too.
Yeah.
Give it just another minute.
Yeah. I'll just check and see if I see anybody come out of the walkway.
No.
There was no way.
Other than this stuff here, did you, you emailed us for our, you know, meeting materials, but I can't seem to open it. It's spinning. Is there any, anything that's the whole time it hasn't been able to open? But is this all it was?
That's all it was. Yeah.
Yeah.
Extend the.
Yeah, the fire contract was just.
And that's the same as last year's other than the date?
Yeah, so yeah, it's the same as last year's and then I had, I had him change all the.
All right. Attendees on July, identify themselves.
Is there anybody else in the waiting room?
Sure, let's give it just.
Yeah.
I was hoping that David would be here because we need David to approve the July 12 minutes because Phil left partway through and can't approve. Or should not approve.
Oh, is he, you left? Oh, so there was that.
For the fire, it was a fire.
Well, their draft, so.
Actually, there is no legal.
There's no legal requirement to approve.
To approve or decide. It's just good business practices to approve. Signing is superfluous.
But it's, Dave wasn't here either.
Yeah, he was, he was.
He was on line.
He was on.
He was there the whole time.
All right.
Phil, Phil came in a little.
Came in late and left early.
And then the people went off. Hey, yeah. And frankly, he was a complete, I haven't verified. It was a big house fire. It was absolutely necessary for him to exit right away.
Nobody else in the waiting room? Nobody else in the waiting room?
Nobody else in the waiting room. Why don't we just go ahead?
Yeah, we gotta do introductions, start the recording.
We've been recording for the last.
Yep.
Couple of minutes anyway.
Hi, everybody online. We're gonna have you identify yourselves, starting with Deb.
Jeff Tangway, town clerk, town bookkeeper.
Okay, Barlow wanted to go next.
David Barlow, town treasurer. Over.
Kelly, would you like to identify yourself?
Kelly Collins, Coventry resident.
Martha Sylvester, resident.
Everybody. Ned Connell, town administrator.
Pretty fell during our control officer.
That was Renee Falconer, annual control officer. If the video did not pick up, sorry. Sir? Oh, Anthony Tangway. Anthony Tangway, okay, resident? Okay.
Scott Brier, select board.
So my cat's like, board.
I'm gonna call Monday, September 20th, meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes, we do. Jim Cope has asked that we postpone his thing until a future day. Is having designs created for the property that's over here, the, the, the half moon shaped property that's opposite the town square, town grid.
Okay, so. Any other changes or additions to the agenda?
I do not have. Any other questions on it?
Number three, are we gonna allow public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question concerning the use of ATVs on lane road.
Come, why don't you come forward and sit this ego right over here next to the microphone so you can hear your. Watch out for the cables.
So you're Judy Ballinger?
Judy Ballinger, yes.
Okay. So use of ATVs on the lane road?
Yes. It was my understanding that the town was looking into an alternate route. Perhaps the Alderwick Road. We've had the pleasure of the ATVs for two years. I think it's somebody else's turn.
Okay.
I don't know who makes these decisions. I'm not opposed to ATVs. They are loud. They are busy. Weekends are extremely busy. And Lane Road is a dirt road. My house is very, very dirty thanks to the constant comings and goings. This year, I did request that calcium chloride be put down and it has been, and it's helped somewhat. But as you know, it's been very dry summer, lot of dust. Our house is on the road crossing the sugar bush. I'm not complaining about the ATV drivers with a few exceptions. For the most part, they're, they follow the rules. They're polite. There are a few of them who have, I believe, illegal mufflers. I don't know why that can't be addressed, but it has never been. There are some of them who did not obey the speed limit. That has never been addressed, as far as I know. Selfishly, my children are grown, my grandchildren are grown, but I worry about the people who do have young children on the road. I worry about the people whose dogs and cats happen to wander into the road. It used to be a very quiet road. It's anything but now. And as I said, I think it's time for somebody else to share it. It's not uncommon on the weekend to have 10, 12, 14 in a row. In the evening when they go by, windows closed, door closed, we cannot hear our television. It's annoying.
Yeah.
So. Is it possible that the town can give somebody else else a chance? I understand that the argument has been the speed limit on the Alderwick Road is higher. I would think that if you're a responsible ATV driver, you would, you don't have to do 50 just because it's posted at 50. I mean, so I don't know. That's, that's my concern. Where, where is the town headed with this? I was told earlier that there was going to be a discussion and it might very well be that the Alderwick Road would be used and then it would be put up for a vote. And.
Do you know where they? So, so right now, well, one, you were, I wasn't going to go on speed limit, it's been on lane room 35, so hopefully they're not going 50, but I could see them doing that, but the planning commission had it in their plate for the ordinance and then, I don't remember when it was, I think we decided that, so right now, the ordinance, as it's written and voted, I mean, 2018, 2019, whenever we did that whole thing, is all roads in Coventry are open to ATVs. There's no, every, every single road currently is open. So this past spring, we were, we tasked the planning commission to look, relook at the ordinance and come up with changes that could happen after a year of having it, so it would have been 2020. And then we got to the point so far, because when you, when you make an ordinance or amend an ordinance, you have dates and timelines. So once an ordinance is brought to the select board and the select board says, yes, that's what we're gonna do, then you have like 90 days that you have to have it set out there for the public, the residents to be able to petition it if they want to, which is what happened the first all around. And then you have another so many days after that. So the way we looked at it was, we would put it on hold and just because at that point, we weren't gonna make it till the end of the season anyways. So I'm hoping that the planning commission is gonna start looking at it again soon now, so that we can get it on the town meeting and have it as a vote at town meeting for the amended, for foreign amended ordinance or to keep the way it is current.
Well, the fact that it's, although I understand all the roads are open, I was under the impression that the ATV club determined that Lane Road would be the road that would be used.
It's all in how their mapping is, and that's what we, that was one part of the discussion planning commission was supposed to have was to work with the club to come up with what roads they were marking as their trails to.
Well.
Now, I know there is issues with the trails on that side of town as it is, so I think that's a fluid thing now because the trail that comes at the 14th side of Lane Road, the trail's closed from that point over. I know they're, because the landlords are doing our Newport Center, told them they couldn't be on the land anymore. I know, so at that point, there was nothing, nowhere to go past Lane Road at that point and just down all the way over into the city. I believe they were working on or have, or I don't know where it's at of getting access over to Newport Center from the Newport end of Lane Road somehow. I think it's to.
Well, they could see me, I gave them permission to go across my property because I think they could get up by.
Come across.
She sold up that.
Yeah, and up Reed Road.
Up Reed Road, so they can come down Reed Road across my property and I don't know where they're, if they made it past that corner or not.
Yeah, so right now, that end of town for the club is up in the air, I think, so. I'm actually, I'm.
Well, that sort of explains why they.
Traffic over there.
Why they go down and back and down and back.
Yeah, because, well, I looked at the map.
They can't go.
My brother-in-law came over the other day and we looked at the map at my place and it's still marked as being open to get up to Pogony Hill and I don't think that's even open anymore. So that would explain why they go down and come back because they're thinking they're getting down to the 14 end of Lane Road, be able to turn around, go into Newport Center, but they can't.
I accept that.
So you're getting twice the traffic because instead of going by one way, it's closed on the other.
But I can't believe that after going down and back and seeing that it's closed, obviously, word hasn't gotten around. There's been a lot of use.
So I, there's an app on the phone that they use for the maps and that's where a lot of people are using. And I looked and this was just this weekend, I looked at it with my brother-in-law and it's still open. I told him, I said, I, because they were trying to get over that way. I said, I don't think you can get that way. I wouldn't take the time to waste and go back and find you have to turn around.
Well, a lot of, there's still a lot of traffic and, I mean, after two years, I recognized, you know, it's the same ATVs, boom, 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 you know.
We can reach out to the club and have them put signage. This is not the trail on the other end and this is closed. They could put a sign up so there's no through traffic at this time for ATVs and possibly up, upgrade their map.
That might.
The map should, yeah, and that's, that's.
Yeah.
Paper map there.
They're possibly gonna tell me, what is it, two more weeks, two or three more weeks?
No, I understand that, which is why, I mean, in the past, I was told, oh, you know, you're too late. I.
And my, my, I, and that's something that can jump on is to get the planning commission back in, into that.
Please jump on it, please.
To get, and they, they came to us with a prospective amended ordinance and then there were some questions that came up that they were gonna go back and deliberate about and then come back again. My hope, and I think Scott's the same way, is that we can get it done and taken care of to put it on the town meeting.
Don't let everyone.
Have it done at that point. And at that point, the time will be right and.
We'll have time to change or amend the ordinance prior to it.
It's, it's not, it's not the ordinance as much as I, I don't know. I have the feeling that it's the club that, you know, as you said, they, they make up their, their map. Well, can they be encouraged to change their map? The time that I.
And I know we had discussed to them about doing all the work and they were open for that because at that point, Newport, that and the 14 end of Lane Road was open to Newport Center. So the trail comes right up.
Yeah, I know, I know where.
Straight across. So it would make sense for them to go down from, if they're coming from Newport to go down all the road and hit the trail and get up to that side of the lane.
Yeah.
But it's still also is dependent because Newport has it open to Lane Road. So it might be something to work with Newport to say, okay, we aren't gonna allow you further up the island, which forces them on the whole road. So it's something to work with with the planning commission and.
So.
There's a lot of different.
Is there anything else that we need to do as?
Right, so right now, the way the ordinance is written, there's not a lot.
No, I understand. Yeah, yeah.
There we go, discussing that again. A whole enforcement that can be done because it's wide.
Yeah, no, I, but I just.
Also some closures on the Reed Road area because of D-Trans D and stuff, that's a minor closure to the properties on the repo there. And in my opinion, that's forcing, or I'll say forcing people down on Lane Road right now.
I think they like Lane Road. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a nice, if, if I were a rider, it's a nice place to ride. It's just, as I said.
Yeah. Fly slowly and don't create dust.
Well, you can't help but create dust. And, and as I said, I, I think it's somebody else's turn. It's, we've had it for two years.
I know.
Yeah, that would be great. I've, I've taken.
You have an email, you can give Ned your email? And then he can keep you in the loop?
Yeah, you can get on the email list and.
Yeah, definitely get an email.
You know, I've taken up enough of your time, but I said, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Um, I have.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. Which Dave was here. Thanks. So I put two storage units up in Coventry over here.
Yeah.
And I had a pre-construction meeting, me, John Gobey and Dave, because right across the road from my storage units, there's the town stormwater catch basin. And then it catches it there, sends it under the road. Then there's another catch basin directly across the road from there. But it's kind of weird because the catch basin here sends it under the road, then there's a catch basin here, and then it drains down and discharges out the bottom. And it discharges directly onto my property. And when I, I kind of worked around it, when I previously had a building there and I made it known to Dave that, you know, I didn't want it there any longer. It's the town's, it's the town's stormwater discharge drainage and it's discharging. Well, Dave's theory was the catch basin, the second one, is in the town right away, which it is, but then it discharges at the bottom about five feet down, right onto my property. And I said, I'd like it to go away. And he made it sound like he didn't want it to go away and he would have to talk to the town attorney. So he said he'd get back to me. Well, like a month went by and he never got back to me. So I checked with him again and he said, he never recalled the town attorney. He didn't have time and to check with the, the town's, town zoning administrator. And then that day I talked with David, come in and nobody was here. So that was just a couple of weeks ago. So when I had the pre-construction meeting, what I was trying to do was, hey, I'm gonna, you know, do what I want with my land, kind of give you some notice so they can, you know, I just didn't want to fill it. And then all of a sudden, the minute I fill it, I'm gonna flood somebody's property, you know, because it's, it's discharging on my land right now. So that's kind of how, that's how he left it. Like, he didn't want to do anything with it. It is how it is and that's how it's gonna be and we'll talk to the town attorney. Then he said he never talked to the town attorney and he was too busy to talk to the town administrator. But I thought the road commissioner kind of, you know, had some say in it, or who does he, who does he, you know, who does he go for that? Does it typically go to you guys? Or I just think, think the town attorney was the right answer.
I think maybe if he, if he requested talking to the town attorney, he was getting some advice, probably thinking,
Yeah.
do we have to move this?
Yeah, well, I.
You know.
Well, I don't think he has to move it, but it discharges on my land and I.
Hey, you guys hear me?
On my land.
Oh, David's on, there he is.
He's like, so. He's three minutes.
That wasn't, that's not quite accurate. What I, what you originally stated was that you wanted to dig a ditch across the town's property. And I said, I don't think I'm gonna be doing, making that decision without talking to the select board.
No, I said, we said that.
As far as the culvert goes, I'm not changing that culvert. That, that was put in with AOT, by AOT, that was the I-91 of the day. And I'm not changing the water.
And.
If the select board decides to do elsewise, that's their business. But as a road commissioner, I'm not changing that waterway.
So why have, how, why have we passed this timeframe? You never gave me that answer.
Because that wasn't the answer you asked me about. You asked me about putting a ditch on a town road. You told me that we, you were gonna dig a ditch over onto the town's land.
No, no, I didn't say we were gonna. We said it was an option for someone to do.
No. I disagree.
So we can agree to disagree then.
That is on a right of way draining.
It discharges under my property. So Dave has a point, the, the catch basin, there's two catch basins. There's one on the, the one on this, my side of the road, really not much of an issue because I don't think it's catching much stormwater, but the one on the other side of the road catches whatever waters coming down.
By the church, down the hill, all that water.
Probably, yeah. I don't know if it catches much off the hill or if it's mostly from the road, but that one discharges into catch basin that's on my side of the road. But the problem is, there's a drainage plate five feet down at the bottom that discharges directly onto my property. So, I mean, I talked to two of my lawyers and it says my land, I can do what I want with it and there's no easement for the town discharge to go on my land. So I basically can do what I want, but I was trying to avoid any issues by just doing what I want and then all of a sudden, it, it's gonna go somewhere, you know?
So the outlet is on, on your land or on?
Boy, it's, it's, I don't know. It's, it's almost like here's the line, here's the catch basin, here's the discharge. So.
So what, David, what have you seen in the, in other situations where this has happened as the road commissioner? Like what, what thing, what type of things have taken place?
We wouldn't have the legal right to put water on his land, but seeing how the water that was already there, I don't think you have the legal right to stop it and put it on somebody else's property. All those pipes and you people need to understand this were put in by the agency of transportation.
Problem is, there's no, it's just one of those rare instances where here's the town right away of the road or my property line and it's gotta be within inches, like here's the line. There's no, there's no, there's no discharge pipes on my land, you know, there's no pipes actually physically on my land. It just discards at my land.
That's something the discharge can be turned. I don't know how the lines work over there. I, and honestly.
Well, that's what we tried to have a discussion, but Dave, you know, made it clear again today that you didn't want it going onto the town's property.
Think it's something to look at. Yeah, we definitely need to look at it and. So why don't you write that down, Ned? Why don't you take a, take a peek at it and.
And if Ned's gonna go look at it, I'd like to meet with him and go at the same time.
Yeah.
Another thing I'd like to address while you guys are meeting is you have your survey stakes up. It appears you filled on to the town's land and I'd like to see that corrected.
Yeah, that's no problem.
What road is this on?
This is Rachel.
Just right up.
It's, it's, the property's 299 Main Street.
Well, that's.
Why don't we set up a meeting? I'll, I'll, if the board gives me permission, I'll, I'll meet Ned and we'll, then I'll know, I'll have an idea of what it looks like and then we'll see.
Yeah.
If that's the way to correct it.
So it's the, what we can do.
Yeah.
But just one.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Do we need a motion plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, just.
You wanna do it?
Just looking into it, so.
Yeah.
I mean, what is it? What's your, Ned, what's your normal hours during the day?
Eight to four.
Every day?
Every day.
Okay.
God willing.
Would you have any time available tomorrow?
Tomorrow, actually, it's sort of full. Let's do this on Wednesday.
Okay, what time Wednesday would work for you?
The first day. Like eight fifteen.
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
I just don't wanna, we're almost done the project, so I just wanna, you know, we're gonna be seeding and stuff like that, so kind of like to get it resolved.
All right, Tony, thanks.
Okay, no problem. Thanks.
Yep. Have a good night. And the other public comment? Okay, the proposal for lights at Lady Bird Park provided by D-Trans.
So I'm surprised that D-Trans is not here, to be honest with you. But does everyone have the map? Would anyone like to come to the map?
I got it.
It's basically three or four lights in, in Lady Bird Park. They came forward, they're paying for the whole damn thing and.
I think that's a parking lot for people to use. It should be lighted. There's no light down there right now.
Are these poles, so regular telephone poles are kind of ugly. These are like metal night poles.
He didn't really put in there what they were using, right?
I would have said from his language when he spoke on the phone, they were just gonna jam in.
So that's where, that's where I think we need to talk to them. Because I do agree with, I think David responded. I do agree with not just putting straight telephone poles in there.
Okay.
I.
I don't want to see.
Seeing something that's maybe more.
Like a parking light type of pole, almost.
So I'm also confused on this. I'm looking at the map that Ned has sent us and it shows where the light poles are going, but when you look at the dig safe sign, sticks down there, that in no way indicates where they are putting the poles.
Did they go down and mark for this?
I don't think.
If you go down to the park right now, you'll see, I believe, three or four dig safe sticks and none of them are in the places that we're showing poles on this map.
Jason was waiting until we were, we talked to.
I thought Jason was also. I will check with him, confirm that Dig Safe and his map are.
That could be something different too.
Yeah, I, I, I. Yeah, I, 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 in my opinion, Jason sent us the map, picked out locations that would cover it in terms of lighting. And did not involve dig safe at all and. I think they're, I'll say adjusting.
I know how dig safe works.
So David, Dave, would you be um like? Let's discuss this lighting. So I agree the lighting, my feelings on the lighting in the park, if. If the state's paying for it would be nice. And I believe it is needed, but I believe also my feelings are. I'm not excited about having three normal telephone poles. Stuck up there just with a, you know, just with a security type light. I would like it more like a parking lot.
Yeah.
Nice structured type of pole.
Yeah. And that was my, that was my contention all along. You've got a very small piece of land down there and we don't, that we don't actually own. And you start sticking poles everywhere and you're going to junk it up in a hurry. I still don't understand why we can't turn one of the lights uh that are indicated there. And maybe go with something out on that common that's going to look half decent. And light it up some.
What do you, what do you mean, what do you mean turn one of the lights that are there now?
Yeah, or or put another one back toward, see how that light goes back toward the grassy area? It doesn't even go toward the parking ride.
One, the one street light that's down there now on the telephone pole is.
Yeah, if you put that, if you just turn that light or put another one back this way toward the. Toward the uh parking ride and then maybe put one or two out on the common, I would think that'd be plenty.
I, I do think if they didn't put the one on just by the telephone pole and then two over on the common, it'd be fine. Especially if they spun that one on the telephone pole and got it to work, because it's not working right now.
Yeah.
That would probably work too, because you can get, you can get the new LED lights at angle out and it would light up most of that. Especially if you're going to have two more over on that common.
Yeah.
So we should.
You might even be able to get away with one right on the um. Right by the Main Street sign right there at the end of the common. If you had that light turned around and turned on, you might end up with enough light there.
Uh, it depends on the light.
Yeah.
But I think we need to get Jason.
I think we need to get.
Before we allow, let's have him come in here and then he can listen and and hear what our thoughts.
Not that they probably, they'll probably say, well, it's our land, we're going to do what we want. We're, we're, huh? No, I said they're going to say it's our land, we can do what we want.
Yeah, but uh he's, I like Jason. He's a really reasonable.
Listen.
Proud of him. Uh, I think he would be open to us investing in a uh nice looking lighting and. Maybe just paying for the electricity.
Even if it's something that we gotta split, it's more than what the state wants to pay. We split it or something. But I think it definitely needs more lighting down there for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's, and it's certainly, Phil and I, just FYI for everyone involved, Phil and I had spoken. Indirectly about this, about linking our wifi that goes over to there from the town uh. The community center over there to get additional power over there, so that we could have a little bit better. Signal in that area. Just FYI.
Well, that was, that was something else I want to talk to Jason too is. Thought of putting cameras up and figuring out to double duty those light poles too for. For cameras or something.
So it might be nice to have.
At least a present is to put two pipes in when they run the pipe.
Yeah.
That way it's prepped. Go with the lighting, see if things feel better.
And get permission, hang a camera for one.
Yeah.
All at the same time.
Yeah. And Jason was amenable, amable to this also. We're, I'm sorry. They were assuming. Let's hope that they can. Nicer poles. I'm sure they've got. Pile of nicer poles somewhere.
Go look and, go look at the parking ride and say, Jay. Somewhere they.
Yeah.
New street telephone.
No, I'm sure they have.
Right. I mean, David's got the park looking nice. He'd be ashamed to.
Put more telephone poles.
Right. So uh one of the things you also ought to know is that's not a, that's not an official parking ride and Jason will. Continually tell you that when he doesn't want to invest.
Okay, from the state perspective, it's not official.
Correct.
He is a hundred percent correct. It's not an official.
Yeah.
I really wish we could push pressure on the state of Vermont and take control of that. Park can have uh complete control of it.
For us to have complete control?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we got this far.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got to make, we got to raise the moment.
Yeah.
Jason's good, but I mean, um.
Yeah.
The parks guy didn't want to get rid of it. I, I, I would really like to see the town put pressure on the state of Vermont, turn that over to us.
Yeah.
They have no use for it. They've invested no money in it for. My lifetime and uh. I just think it'd be best if we owned it and took care of it.
Yep.
Alright, any other uh discussion this time for the Ladybird Park lights? You're going to reach out to Ned and.
Oh, hang on. So. They pays for that power down there right now on the, for that light, right? Or is it us?
What's that?
The state pays for that power down there for the current street light that's not working, or is it us?
I believe so. I believe you'll find that one in uh. And the one across the road on uh fourteen side, I think they're paying for those.
Martha, that's something.
I have not seen something that denotes.
So.
We pay for.
Yes, usually because that street light knocked through a meter, so it's, it's going to be put through. So as long as they don't put those other poles on our meter that's down there. Because that's our meter down there, right? Dave, on the pole for the outlet?
For the outlets, correct.
They charge, they charge like thirty dollars uh for street lights a month. But, you know, if. If they weren't willing to pay for nice poles and then. Yeah, don't want telephone poles and he says, the heck with you, we're putting telephone poles. Maybe we could, maybe we could pay for the power.
If they don't want telephone poles, they'd say, hey. Give us the damn bar.
Yeah.
It's not up to AOT.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's state.
It's the Parks Division that's helping it out.
Yep.
But still. If you, if you just say, it's yours.
Yep.
Okay, so. Alright, moving on. Um, number five, it doesn't look like, see, um, Dominic or.
Dom is still at work today, but Steve could have been here. Let me just do. One quick look to see. Just. Link, because it's. Problematic.
Yeah.
There's no lights on in the house and his truck is not there, so I'd say we need one, number six.
So, but we do still need to rectify what we did that last meeting.
Yes, we still do. We need to say. It is no longer met.
So, what's the word is that we use to do that? Because.
We need a motion that says the, the prior appointment of Eve Taylor to. The Coventry Fire District. Was based on uh legal counsel ruled as. You know, because it was not fully noticed and fully applied to the public. No void.
We have to do a motion for that and.
Yes. We will wait and go further. We're waiting for further action.
Like, we're going to try to reappoint them.
So Steve Taylor did, did submit a letter?
He did submit a letter. I, when he printed it out, it just says, you know, I'm interested in disturbing. But it was a request based on.
Get this meeting.
For our people and he to say he's attached. And he was noticed, he did get an email to his. Where he was working on his own. And he's chosen not to.
He responded that he would attend?
Uh, he did not respond in any way. But he was fully notified in advance, in person with Dom and I speaking, going to say. You need to attend. This is sort of a mandatory situation. If you do not attend. You know, it'll be no other way.
I still want to make sure we word that. I can't get the email from.
You keep looking. We're going to, we're going to come back to number five. We're going to move on to number six and come back to number. Discussion of the new assistant animal patrol officer and its seventy-five dollar contribution towards new kennel costs.
So uh just real quick, pick up your time. Um, I had an outdoor kennel. I don't know if you guys were aware or not, but I've actually been. Housing all of the stray dogs for Coventry, for actually other towns, for, for now at my house. I built kennels inside at my own expense. I did have an outdoor kennel. Uh, that I acquired, I don't remember where it came from. It came from one of the towns twenty years ago. We had a big rainstorm, the roof collapsed and it just completely threw the whole thing. So I figured, I want to, I want to have an out. Kennel, I don't like to keep dangerous dogs inside. If I have like a big pit or something that's really crazy, I wanted outdoors.
Right.
Um, so I want to replace the kennel and figure, spread the costs at town, well, actually eight towns that I cover. Um, so I've asked each one of the towns for seventy-five dollars, I think about four hundred bucks. Um, I could put up a new uh kennel with the roof on it. Um, and the other piece, uh, I, I do have a bunch of towns that I cover. Um, and my stepdaughter usually covers for me. When I'm gone on vacation or whatever. I just kind of wanted to make that official all the towns, so they had her name, had her information. And that was okay that she steps in if I'm not available. Um, because she's kind of been doing it anyway, just because she's available and she's willing to do it, because nobody else is. Um, and so I just kind of wanted to make that official. So far, Brownington and Derby have um okayed.
So she is going to be your assistant?
She will, and I will, she will be paid, I will be paying her for her time out of my. I'm not asking for any, yeah, I'm not asking for money from any towns. I will pay her. We've, her and I have already come to an agreement. Um, and I will just pay her out of what, the money that I, that I make. I'm not asking her for any extra money. I'll just pay her for her time.
We need to know.
My, my only concern is I want to make sure that everybody's aware, because just in case something happens. I mean, I've been doing animal control for twenty years. I've only ever had one. Accident, like I was attacked by a dog in Derby two years back. Um, and I mean, in twenty years, that's the worst thing that's ever happened. Um, but I wanted to make sure that her name was there. In case she did come to Coventry and pick up a dog and something happened, you know, bitter or attacked or whatever. Um, that, so you guys wouldn't say, oh, what the heck, she doing picking up dogs when you're supposed to be doing? So I just wanted to kind of see if it's okay, okay, that with everybody and make it official that she.
So she'd be covered under your insurance, Renee?
I don't have insurance. I'm covered as a town employee as far as I, as far as I know. I don't know how.
Okay, I wasn't sure how that worked, so.
Town employee.
That, that's probably where we're going to come from. We got to do an appointment of an assistant animal control officer there.
Okay, I wasn't sure how that worked. I'm sorry.
Okay, that makes sense. I'll make a motion to appoint.
Her name is Michelle, Michelle Falconer. Yes, she lives in Burn.
As the assistant um animal control officer for Coventry.
So, what else?
Two else, two else.
All those in favor?
Alright.
And then.
And um so what, the way I left it with the money, the seventy-five dollars for, from each town that I'm asking for. I'm waiting for all of the towns. So far Derby's approved it and Brownington, Brownington has approved it. I'm waiting to hear back from Westmore um and Barton and Orleans and you guys. But I won't ask for it until all the towns agree.
Where would the money come from, Dave?
Me?
That would just come.
From the normal budget, right?
Go Deb. Come out of the checkbook.
Yes.
We would, we would take it out of the normal budget. I'm sure we can find it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the seventy-five dollar contribution towards new kennel costs. All those in favor?
Alright.
I guess let us know.
Okay, yeah, I'll let you know. I'm not going to, like I said, I'm not going to do that until all the, until all the towns approve it, which I'm sure. The other couple I'm waiting for and say no, but I won't ask for it till I have everybody's approval, so.
Renee?
Yes.
From you, the only thing we would need is at that point, if you can just sort of come up with some type of invoice. And give us an invoice directing us to pay that to you, that would be perfect, just for our corporate records here.
Yeah, that's. No problem, Deb. I've been actually working with E M Brown, um, because I get a discount through them anyway and uh. There I'm working with E M Brown, I'm going to kind of build my own thing, so I'm not going to like buy a remade one, so. So, yeah, I can do that. No problem.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, don't we need a W two also for. So that she.
No, we've got, because Renee's paying.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just pay her out of my.
Well, we appreciate it.
Hey, no problem.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you're the same. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're going to scratch number seven. Find what you need to go back.
Yeah. That too, but.
Um, moving back to number five to rectify the appointment.
I don't even know if it needs to be a motion or either. It's just a statement.
Just a statement that is.
It's a statement that. The town did not appropriately follow the open meeting law and. Where the, where it's Taylor on. I'm going to have you look up the date and in there.
Yeah.
As being invalid.
And legal counsel.
And legal.
I will word it correctly, so it's, yeah, hopefully violated.
Yeah, so he, he wrote in here, uh, characterized it as invalid on the basis of the town did not properly follow the open meeting law. Their appointment to be invalid. That there is again the. Oh, it should be motioned. Okay, thank you. So I guess I'll make that a motion. Okay, if somebody wants to second that.
I'll second it.
Uh, what is the actual motion again? Like.
The, the clearance, when, whichever date it was back three minutes ago, two minutes ago, I think it was, that we appointed Steve Taylor and other business. As the uh co, as a committee member for Coventry Fire District, we did it. Outside of the open meeting law for notification.
So we're just accepting responsibility with this motion?
We're, we're accepting the response, we're, we're stating we did it invalidly and it was not a valid.
Oh, not a potentially valid appointment.
Yeah.
And with withdrawing our.
Yeah.
Appointment.
With hopes of him coming back to get appointed. No show tonight, so.
So uh on that, further into the uh, am I allowed to discuss Brian's email a little bit?
From the eighteenth?
Uh, whatever one he had on this, the only one I ever saw on it.
I think I just read verbatim what he had in there, so.
So I guess I, the only thing I wanted to m- mention was, I got the gist in reading that, that he wanted us to reopen it. Search.
So he put in there that way it can be a vacancy and then the town can conduct a search or some other method by getting a seat.
So, so are we going to uh get another postcard out there and.
Probably.
Let's, let Steve reapply whoever wants to.
Steve did, we had that discussion, but not everybody, or we had to clarify that whole thing. And in the meantime, they got a letter from Steve, Steve sent Ned a letter that he was interested. We have him, but it was requested that he come to one of the meetings. This is the second meeting he has not come to.
Yeah.
So did, ah, so you're saying you, you feel we have reopened this?
Well, there's another spot anyway.
But there is, yeah, there is a second spot anyway. But there is, yeah, there is a second spot anyways, but yes.
I, I guess that was my only concern reading the email, so.
Yes, it is reopened because there is not a second member, it's just Dom still at this point.
So are we gonna throw another postcard out there?
We should, yeah.
Yeah.
We should, and just have Steve or whoever else, uh, wants to apply, uh, get in there.
And in addition to that, if and when I saw Steve's truck today, and later, I thought he was gonna be in here. Uh, I will speak to him directly to say, you know, what's going on and what.
So where are we at, we're gonna approve the motion?
Yeah, so I seconded it, all those in favor?
Aye.
David is, um, you're a nice.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. There's also Martha noted that we need, uh, people for the piece of the planning commission, and, uh, I will add that to the postcard.
Clerk treasurer.
Not planning commission, prudential committee, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There is openings on the planning commission though, oh, well, they, 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 that's not, we don't have to.
Yeah, okay, that, that one's.
Is there one?
It's up for discussion, I need to follow through on that one, sorry.
Yeah, I know.
I'm uncertain about that at this point.
There is an open, we do do, need to do that.
Well, we should leave it where it is.
Little town meeting.
Yeah.
I want to, Martha, can I clarify your clerk treasurer on there?
So the Coventry Fire District is all, is looking for two planning commis, uh, two planning commission, two, uh, prudential committee members, a clerk, a treasurer, and a delinquent water collector. That they're statutorily required, so I was just thinking you could throw clerk treasurer on there with two prudential committee members and see if you get any responses or, you know, the letters of interest.
Yep.
To overkill, you know?
I thought you were talking about our clerk treasurer, I thought I didn't know something.
Well, I thought I was a little lost, now I'm trying to figure out which planning commission member resigned this time.
I might have been wrong, I might have heard something that I didn't.
No, there, there, there's talk, let's just.
Okay.
Keep this talk outside of the meeting for right now.
All right, let's move on, okay, we got a, eight, number eight, upper funds. Upper funds.
Uh, we missed seven.
Seven, seven, uh, you, oh, you missed the beginning, seven was requested to be moved.
To a future date, to be determined.
So could I get some information on that in the meantime, on what the land is and what the proposal is?
Absolutely, absolutely, that is.
I say send it up, cause I don't even know.
Absolutely, Dave, that's not a problem, stop by the office on Wednesday, I also have the, uh, invoice from, uh, item that I want to end up, the, uh. The tags for all the trucks, I need to go over it with you, so, yeah, we can talk about that, and we should talk about it together and then talk about it, something with Jim onsite, you and I, as real commissioner and administrator, okay?
That's on what now, Jim?
Jim Cobb.
Jim Cobb, we should talk in advance if you and I meeting with Jim Cobb to go over it, he's putting together a sketch of exactly what his proposal is.
But you don't know the piece of property?
I know the two pieces of property right now, I can tell you off the top of my head, one's the half moon shaped property that's across the street, across Main Street, the town green. The other piece of property is the five foot strip up next to the, uh, D P W garage on Main Street.
Which part of that property?
Uh, he's offering to give us all of those properties, all of them.
So I don't know how much to go in because he wanted to bring this up, I don't even know that much that, what you're saying, so I don't know. It's right to be bringing that up before he wants to bring it up.
Well, I met with him and he discussed it with me.
Okay.
He's, he's.
So I'm the one that, I'm the one that know.
Well, he was supposed to come and we're gonna decide, come get on the agenda and we'd talk about it, but again, he didn't show up, so.
No, he actually, no.
He, he requested.
Okay.
That he's gonna prepare sketches of whole piece of the property so that we are fully apprised of fence lines and property boundaries and such.
Okay. Are you good, David?
Yeah, I just need some actual information.
All right, yeah, and, yeah, Ned will get that.
We'll definitely get you, yeah, I'm, I'm in your ballpark, David, I want some actual information, I want. I'm gonna want a survey to say, we own to here, you own to there.
Everything, everything that he did, we had probably an hour of discussion and everything that he talked about. Made sense, it didn't, it, no, nothing seemed like way out on left feet, you know, it's just, it's whether the town wants to do this or, but it, it didn't seem, it was. You know, something that didn't make sense, but the, prior to having the sidewalk done, and, and, yeah, the whole design of the, the town. So, anyway, yeah, I mean, and, and it's not happen, it's, it's not a five minute thing either, it's probably, it's probably a two year project, so.
There is no rush.
Okay. Mr. Barlow.
No, this is a.
The A, AR, Barbara funds, our funds, Carlo, plan, please.
Let me start, if you mind if I start off?
Okay.
David Barlow, that is.
Go.
Okay, we're seeing from the, the handout, there are four things, the key thing, the topic items is infrastructure. Here are a number of towns on the F T P, there's some forms of, um, culverts, you know, other things, not permitted, okay? However, if you, if you're a store owner, maybe, we don't have store owner meditation, really, really, are eligible, but what is super broad and best are. So we need to, to think about, with these funds, we have three hundred fifteen some odd thousand dollars coming in over the next few years. I know that Dom, if he was here, would say, he would like us to pass through. The second thing that I think is we can't hack some of this funds through or do, no, or fire district, so need to do that. I also spoke about. On my own, there's a simple proposal.
You can put.
It needs to write it down, provide it, it needs to have good detail, cost, oh, not yet, can't just be bounding off about this, it needs to be written forward as a proposal. The, uh.
Ned? Ned? This is David, David Barlow, um, I don't, I'm just speaking for myself, I really can't understand anything you're saying, I'm not sure.
I can't either. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been able to hear him all night.
Okay, hang on. Can you hear me better now? David Barlow, good, okay, uh, Dave Gal, I muted you, so when you need to speak, just, just raise your hand and I will unmute you. It has to do with being an open phone line that has a speakerphone that's not muted, so, the, uh. The, we can pass monies through to the, to another municipality, the fire district is another municipality, we could help them with, uh, metering. Improvements, we could also do sewer line improvements such as that, things like that, infrastructure other than the ordinary road drainage, road culvert stuff, stuff like that, paving, so, thank you. But it's something that we need to start thinking about because the three hundred fifty, three hundred fifteen thousand dollars has a relatively short lifespan and we need to spend it for.
So that's being, that's being split up over two years.
Right.
Does it need to be, it, is the timeline, two different timelines or is it one timeline at the end of that?
The one timeline is twenty twenty-four, and it's a drop dead date.
Well, it's not gonna be hard to spend the money.
No, but, but we just need to think about what we're gonna do with it.
The best.
That might be a thing to pull, planning commission two two, maybe?
It's, actually, I would say it's probably a joint mission, meeting up all of your elected officials in town, the planning commission, and the other.
Fire district.
And fire district and everybody come together, and I would say it's more than one, I would say it's two or three at least. First one, we spout off, everybody, we put down a get a list, second one, we, you know, put some costs to those things on the list, some of them are just gonna fall off list because they're wildly expensive and beyond the three hundred fifty thousand. Other ones are gonna move to the top and we'll continue from there, and, you know, slowly put it through, you know, the sieve of good government and, you know, from there. Some of it might be lights at Labor Park or paying for stuff, you know, bank to get the, the damn park under our control. Pretty straightforward, a lot of towns are thinking about this, the one thing we should do is think about stuff early and, you know, get people online right away. And, and frankly, the, having the church as a secondary, I'll say town hall, is a legitimate expense, so we could put some stuff over there, make it work. Especially in the second, that, that basin floor and lifting it up and putting in a decent foundation that's reinforced and, you know, effectively hold up the building. So, so we have some.
Third emergency operations center.
Yeah. It's, it, that's not an unreasonable thing to do, actually, I just, you know, in terms of harebrained schemes. Logical extension. Say no, but I can't.
Okay, why don't you, Martha said, yeah, I don't know if you're able to unmute him, he might have to do whatever the numbers. Yeah, unmute David, what's, what's the number, star six?
David, are you?
Yeah.
There you go, Scott.
Okay.
What's up?
Just making sure you were unmuted. So you can talk if you wanted to.
We thought you made a comment there, it got muted.
I s, I still can't hear well, but I'll just, uh, wait to the plan, Dave, uh, did you have any input?
So I, uh, I guess I'd recommend, uh, me and Ned, or at least me, uh, engage with the planning commission, and. There's a exceptionally lengthy website from V L C T that discusses all the different things you can do with these funds and. Um, but for sure, I see this as a planning commission gets a bite of the apple first thing, so. Let's. Let's let them at it, um, and I'm certainly willing to engage with them on that. At the earliest opportunity. So, and just to clarify, the fence, the funds seem to be obligated by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, obligated in federal terms means that you've got a plan and a. Probably assigned contract or contracts in place by that date in order to spend the money, and then they have to be, uh, expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So it's not a serious time crunch yet, we do want to get going.
You need to pretty much have everything set in place to start by twenty-four, and then it needs to be done by twenty-six.
Yeah, anything you're actually gonna spend has to be, I, I will say, under contract by the, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So, why don't you, uh, do you want to do it at the next planning commission meeting?
But I have some other bigger stuff for them in regard to the sidewalk study, so let's make it the November meeting, cause they need to get this lifting for them at the next meeting.
It's not as big of a push, it's not, it's.
Yeah.
Well, that'll give me some time to, um, kind of round up the information into a little bit more digestible form too.
Yeah, yeah, shorten that, shorten it to one page, pretty much, if, if, if I. Years to get a plan in place, right?
Stuff the good idea, fairy back of the bottle, is that the idea?
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, but they're, they're willing to disperse the funds prior to twenty twenty-four, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, so we already have the first half of it, and we'll have the second half probably this time next year.
Yeah, so we could start using the funds, we just need to make sure it's filed, the, what we, we, we'll buy.
Well, we also need to, David made a key thing that I think I missed is, they're still creating the rules on how to expand this, we want to expand it quickly, efficiently. But we want to make sure we meet the rules and we want to make sure their rulemaking is, let's just say, complete or as complete with the federal government, I guess, really.
Okay.
But their, their guidelines are significantly similar to what federal law requires before.
Well, I think even if we had a smaller project that we dispersed the fund to, and we asked, well, like, maybe not forgiveness, but make sure it was appropriated right, then have a, you know, we set the, set the, the, the platform, so we know that, yes, we can get these funds.
And my take on this and what I've seen in the listeners around, well, we have to rely on. Is a lot of towns are leaning toward some of a value added project that helps the tax base, that, you know, brings people to town, but they hold on at the end of the weekend, that sort of a thing. That they're doing that, but also does the basic improvements to town. You know, there's a very large number of town halls, don't have generators, don't have, uh, you know, why, I don't have a whole bunch of ability in, in terms of like an emergency location where people can go to and congregate, stay for a certain period of time. Okay.
Thank you, David. Now you're up.
I saw an interesting question from Martha in there, uh, also that, uh, basically it's a, I don't know the answer to it, but it's who approves. These ARPA projects within the town, uh, so, uh, that's one thing I'll look at, see if V L C T is. Appined or offered up an opinion on that yet. Um, I haven't run across it yet. You know, basically, is it, is it like the town budget where the voters have to approve it, or is it already. Considered select board authority level, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. So moving on, treasurer's report for August twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, so August twenty twenty-one, what a great month. If you've got the, uh, my summary report in front of you, I'll give the select board just a minute to. Get bleary eyed on that one.
How much, it's the last day or so, given that China's economy took a, uh. Well, let's just say downfall in the last couple of minutes.
I, I can't really understand what you're saying that again.
Oh, I got it.
Gone back into the black sound hole there.
Can you hear, just out of curiosity, can you hear Scott and I fine?
Yeah, I hear you fine, I just don't hear Ned.
That's weird.
Can you hear me?
He's cutting in and out, cutting in and out, so much that I don't understand what he's saying.
You're not close enough.
Most people don't understand what I'm saying anyway, David, so, it's okay.
Now I got you fired by.
Yeah, thank you, uh, what, my comment is, is irrelevant at this point, go, go ahead, sorry, continue.
Okay, so, uh, in August, accounts balanced as expected, which was good, um, we only had, uh. From the restricted funds that we had some reappraisal spending, which kind of closed out, uh, in a sense, the reassessment project. Uh, twenty-five thousand to San Souci and six thousand eight hundred and fifty to N E M C, that's the thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars you see in the reappraisal fund spending in August. That left, uh, just over a hundred thousand in general fund spending, which is a little high, but let's, uh, just to consider, and, and you can look and see what that was by, uh, thumbing through the entire report, but. Um, the big numbers were thirty-four thousand to the Newport ambulance for coverage, ambulance coverage, um, almost twenty thousand to Orleans County Tax Collector. And then everything else from there tapered on down. So without the big, big spending, it would have been more like a normal month, but, you know, that's seasonal, it's what happens, it comes around this time of year, and that's when we spend that money. Or pay it. The, there was some good news on, uh, sort of a long term problem with the audit, if you look, look through the audit reports over the years, you'll see that he's complained to us about. Reconciling the general fund with the C and B bank account. And that's been problematic over the years because of the foundation upon which our town's financial accounting system was built, which is to say wreckage. But some through, uh. But some through, I guess perseverance, I seem to have gotten the handle on that and got it to balance three months in a row. You don't see that in the report here because I'm still working with Nathan on that, but just to let you know, there's some progress on that. So when you read about that in the auditor's report, we, there's something actually is happening. It's just taking a long time to figure it out, but I think we're gaining on it. There's a related treasurer item related to the EDP fund, which is the endowed fund for library materials at the school. And I, I guess related to this report, I'd like to just ask permission to work with Ned and perhaps contact the town's attorney regarding making the fund hole for dividends that were, should have been received by the fund from two thousand, fiscal year two thousand four through two thousand thirteen. In a nutshell, we've got in Nemrick accountability for fiscal years twenty fourteen through the present for all of the dividends that should have been received for those fiscal years, but the prior fiscal years, we don't have any records of whatsoever. On, in our auditor, basically recommended I consult with the, the attorney, but he's, he's not willing. There's no way to say those funds just appear magically from thin air to make the fund hole. I, I'm thinking that we might need to have an item on the town meeting warrant to have the voters vote to approve that. The the amount itself is forty eight hundred dollars, so it's not huge money, but to make that fund hole, which I think we should, I'd like to pursue that. So if you're okay with me working with Ned and the town attorney on that, just to get a reading on what we would need to do legally, then I'll proceed.
We need a motion for that?
No.
Yeah, I'm just spending legal fees.
Yep.
But just so you know about it. And in a completely unrelated item, but since I have the microphone, the church repairs are underway. If you haven't noticed, part of the steeple is missing. The louvers sits downstairs now. They are, have poked through the ceiling in the, in the the main auditorium for like, I'll call it that, to get at the raft or report work that needs to be done. The power is also back on the church at this time. So pending your questions, that completes my report.
Because I don't pay enough attention. I didn't notice that with the church.
Yeah, I know, I know, I noticed the church was coming.
The one thing that the, just go to the church thing. Do we want the bell when they, when they bring down that, the part of the structure? I'm not sure if the bell's coming down with it or staying up there, but they asked, do we want to get somebody to clean it? There's a fair number of pigeon poop up there.
And do we think the school, the students at the school would find it interesting to repair the bell and to clean the bell in the church, like as a project?
I think there's no plan to actually remove the bell. I think that doesn't come down, so I, you've been up there, Scott. I don't think that's a school kid kind of place.
Oh, they can't clean it up there. I just thought if the bell came down, but it's, it's not coming down, no.
I just wanted, yeah, I, I don't think it's coming down. I don't think so, but I, I agree. If it does come down, sure, that's a.
Well, then the kids would have it, you know, they think that, and when the church is painted and done, we could do the first ringing of the bill by bell by the school, you know, maybe you would, you know, kind of get them in some kind of, have a, some kind of cookout or some celebration. All right, so why don't you find out? I don't think, I, I don't think it's coming down. I'm gonna find it, so, but we'll find out.
Yeah, there's a, as we saw, there's a pretty solid roof underneath it, metal. I think it's copper. But. If it does.
If it doesn't come down, I think we would just let them do all their construction, and then when they're completely done, maybe we could find or hire someone who's done, gonna do a, a one time cleaning and have them do the whole thing.
Yeah. They have, they have done some cleaning in the, the rafters above the main vestibule of the church. They have done some cleaning and they have recovered wood that they will be using back in that structure, so. And they have thankfully taken the other, I'll say, debris away. Thankfully, little or no expense.
Thank you, David. Review and approve Newport fire contract for fiscal year twenty twenty two.
So this was brought up and I, we all missed it. We didn't have, so we're in fiscal year twenty two, right?
Correct.
Get this straight. So we never did a, the contract we signed last January was up until June third, twenty one, which was fiscal twenty one. So it was brought up. Laura didn't somehow didn't receive. I know we sent it to her, but couldn't find the signed contract for them, so that's how that, this was brought up. I sent her the signed contract from fiscal twenty one. And then I said, probably ought to, we need, since we're, didn't do one for twenty two yet, we need to do one. So she, we did the, we, she redid the contracts that's worded the same, just with the, the dates being for fiscal twenty two. So the agreement would be as of today, September twentieth. Still on the three year average. The invoice will be due on January thirty first, twenty two. And it covers from July one, twenty one to June thirty, twenty two.
And they would send us the three year.
They would be sending us a three year, so, so that's this part. I'll get to that after. So we just need to do a vote to sign the, to accept, which I don't think we have a choice because we're in the contract anyways. Is to, I'm, I'll make a motion to have Scott sign on behalf of the select board, the fiscal twenty two agreement between City Newport City Fire Department and County Commissioner for those dates. And then David, I think, well, yeah, so move.
All those in favor?
Aye. David, I see you're muted. You didn't have anything, right?
Can you unmute, Dave?
Oh, I'm good. Same contract that Amanda wrote up, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
You approved me to sign it?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, okay, so there's that. So now on that same thing, I, I, this was in talking on that, that whole discussion, and then,
so I think our schedule or plan going forward is come budget time, so any time now, John's gonna get us the three year average and copies of the calls for July one of, July thirty, thirty of twenty one, that'll be the year that's years based off of. And then, and then that way we'll have the three year average for our budgeting season. And then we'll have a new contract for the fiscal, at this point, it'll be fiscal twenty three. Ready to, or we'll have to bring up the contract after town meeting, since the budget doesn't get approved, we technically shouldn't be signing the contract for this, so. That's the way we, I talked to John about working it. Future, it's come budget time, it'll give us the three year average previous year, and then then we'll have the contract that, meaning after town meeting, once the budget is, that'll be for the or that fiscal year, the budget is.
Correct, for starting.
So that way we're not on the, like last year, we signed this contract in January, we're signing now. So at least now we'll sign the contract for the fiscal year, that budget year, after meeting, and it'll on the same date as the budget.
I understand. Okay, so in the other business, the first thing we have is the Fall Festival. Committee member, member compensation, so. I want to thank you, Martha, for your excellent job on the Fall Festival.
Kelly, don't hear too.
And Kelly, to you and everybody who helped out. Unfortunately, the weather didn't agree with this later on. You know, those of us who attended had a good time. I think the vendor turnout was exceptional, and I think all the vendors did well. You want to give us some input?
So I, I, I agree. All of the vendors, I talked to every one of the vendors, and they all enjoyed it. They all requested to come back. I think the committee worked very well together. And I'm pretty happy at how the whole entire event went off, even with the rain, it was still pretty well attended. And I believe we're under budget.
Do we know exactly how much under budget we are?
Sure, because I think the last bills just went through this one.
Yeah, the last. We are like ten grand under budget, yeah.
I was gonna say.
Plenty of space.
Fireworks, does that sound right?
Ten grand under does not sound right. No, not to me. I was thinking it was maybe four grand tops. We did play with a little bit of some invoices and boosted up some vendors. Like we gave the face painter an extra hundred dollars because she did so many and so well. But we also spent money and had a return, like the fencing. We did also have a lower band cost than I had projected beforehand, so I wouldn't say ten thousand under budget. I would guess about five.
Al or Deb, do you know, or have an idea?
I haven't looked at that figure, but definitely for the next meeting, or if David has it up on his computer, might be able to stay.
Where did we charge that to?
That's the Coventry Day account.
Yeah.
Underneath the general expenses.
So it's five thousand.
Is, is it in under recreation?
Yes, it would be under recreation.
Yeah.
It should be a separate line item, I thought, because.
Yeah, you're maybe a little less than thirty five hundred, thirty four hundred, under budget.
Thanks, that's what I was figuring about for. That's good for math and for me.
I also want to thank Phil for doing the marvelous job on the fireworks. He he put on a better show than he put on for Newport, so that was, that was a plus.
I will, I'll, I'll know that I, I, being an employee of North Star, I told him I wasn't gonna get paid and to put it towards product, so whatever I would have got paid went towards more fireworks. Thank you.
So Martha, what are your feelings about, I guess we'll talk about this at, at another, another, through the meetings in the future, but I think of the Fall Festival, I think it's something that should continue. I, I enjoyed myself, and I think there was a lot of town people enjoyed themselves and a lot of out of town people who came in and spent money and, you know, got, got some food and maybe a beer and listened to the band.
A couple of people in Shaw's over the last couple weeks have asked, they know I'm town administrator, have asked me about it and asked about the fireworks and will the beer and the fireworks be there next year? And I said.
The beer and the fireworks.
The, they were on a certain island shores when I spoke to them. So, but yeah, but it did get attention from outside of just the community, and it was well received.
And what I saw, I thought.
So if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna talk about my own personal view of how the event, like how I feel it should go in the future. I think we had a mixture, if I'm gonna be completely honest, we had a mixture of changing Coventry Day up. I had a lot of, I wouldn't say old time residents, but long time residents say that that wasn't the Coventry Day they were used to. And so I get, and there was people that were obviously upset about alcohol. So I get that. I think that the event should continue, whether it is billed as Coventry Day, or if it's to do with the economic development money, that every point was on point with what's in our plan that, oh my God, I can't think of his name, came up with. You know who I mean?
Yep, Peter.
Yes, Peter Fairweather, there we go. So, and I, I think, I do think the event should be in the future, but I think we really need to ask the citizens, because it, I would say it was a fifty fifty draw. Did the out of town community love it? Absolutely. I was, I thought I would see more residents, but again, it was, you know, I, I was running around and it was well attended, but I was hoping to see some of the people that come, were complaining beforehand. And I didn't, so I was, I was kind of bummed out about that, because I thought that at least be curious about it. But again, that money came with voter approval a couple of years ago, so if it's gonna be a repeat event, we need to have it in the warning for town meeting to spend them dollars. Because they're, they weren't appropriated or voted on before, so now our pot is empty. So we're gonna have to pull from economic development money. Or change the billing to not be Coventry Day or something of that nature.
Yeah, because I guess, yeah, it's all in the wording on how it went out through there, because it may not have been explained fully that it was gonna, that it was gonna be for a different type of not, what, not Coventry Day.
Well, it sort of had two halves. The kid and family and then.
Right, but the previous, the previous, and in the line item that she's talking about, it was previously in there as Coventry Days two, three years ago, where it was only for, only for residents. And the communication for it changing to Coventry Fall Festival being publicly open may not have been put out there well enough for the residents to understand, so I can, I can understand it, but I think it was a lot easy, is a lot easier to manage the way we did it this year, just because I know towards the end of Coventry Days, it was turning into Everybody Day. And that was why it was kind of put on hold and, so.
I also want to give a huge shout out to Brittany. She did amazing with them crafters. And so I, I definitely want to acknowledge that she runs the, does the Parents Club Craft Fair. That's usually done inside the school and transported it out onto Main Street, so I want to give her a huge amount of credit for that.
So I guess between now and, and town meeting, yeah, we should, we'll figure out what kind of funds we want to appropriate and get it, get it in the budget and have the, have it voted on at town meeting with all the other funds.
It is definitely on the list and definitely on there as a success and what he lost back.
So I would like to talk about some compensation for the members who, you know, helped put this Fall Festival on, and I was thinking somewhere like in the two of two hundred and fifty dollars from Arthur and Kelly each, and am I missing anyone?
All everybody, all the committee members, it's Martha, Kelly, Brittany, Karen.
Carrie, Dan, and Gallup.
Yeah.
All the committee.
Yeah, all, yeah, all the committee members.
But we also had Phil who did fireworks, which was a huge bonus to us. So technically, Phil did a lot of footwork, as well as the other road guy. He did amazing work and helped out, too. So I mean, it's hard to not comp, if you're gonna compensate everybody, that would be the group that you would need to do it from. In my opinion.
Kelly, is Kelly on the call?
Yeah, yes, she is.
Kelly, what are your thoughts on compensation?
Um, I personally, um, do not want any money for this. I did this to get the community back together. Um, I enjoy doing these things and I had a great time. It was great to see, um, the smiles on the kids' faces. Um, so, um, thank you Scott, but, um, you can take, um, my money and put it back into the Coventry Fall Festival.
I'm gonna go with that sentiment myself. And as far as John, I kept, uh, uh, what John's work were, was, uh, was in his workday, so he's already been paid for it.
Okay.
Any other work I did, uh, past my normal working hours, I'm not interested in compensation.
Okay.
Phil was another member. Do you feel the same way that I, I next year?
Uh huh.
Do you feel the same way as the other members of?
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't think, if I know them all, I don't think they're gonna pay it. And me, it, I would have, I personally would stay out of it anyways, just because my wife's part of it, so I'm not gonna, I would be using myself either way, but I feel like.
So, so let, let me, let me explain this. So because we, the only reason why I'm saying compensation would be a thing is because we are under budget. If we, if that money was not already voter approved, I would not even be having this discussion as well. But I, I personally don't want to shoot down other committee members because this wasn't brought to the other committee members. So I don't know how, how any of them could speak on that. And if you're giving, if you're giving an equal stipend, then if somebody doesn't want to take it, then they can return the check. I mean, I, I think having that out there is, is good business, so I appreciate that. And like I said, it's already voter spent money, so I mean, voter approved money to spend.
I know I have a suggestion here. Why don't in the, when I'm setting up next year's budget for this committee, why don't I set up a, a stipend for committee members, the chairman gets slightly more. Other members get slightly less, let's just say. And we'll set it up for next time and so that where Martha or anybody else really goes above, beyond the call of duty, gets a reasonable thank you gift from the town.
So Dave Barlow or, or Deb, you could probably answer this question. So say we, we just, say we did write compensation checks to the six or eight people and they returned them. That would probably create a little bit of a problem.
Well, it's just a little bit of a pain in the butt only because you're taking the time to expense money and generating those invoices and then me printing the checks, me creating the warrant, then bringing it before the select board, then the select board giving it to David approved, then those checks are being mailed out. And then if they decide to return those checks, then they return those checks back, then we have to go, we have to avoid those checks, which are cost of the checks that you had to purchase, then you have to get rid of those open invoices. So I mean, that's sort of, I mean, it's definitely, it can be doable, but you're just wasting personnel time in going through that whole process. Uh, Mr. Barlow may have something in additional to add to that.
Well, we covered it.
Don't you just reach out? Why don't we just reach out to the committee members and ask them if they want to be compensated and if they don't, no big deal. And if they do want to be compensated, no big deal.
Okay, so do we need a motion to say that we're willing to come with any of those members $250 at their request? Or up to, but I'm staying out of that. Somebody need a motion, I know.
Actually.
I don't think we do, do we? Do we need a motion for that? I mean, it's coming out of the.
We reach out to.
I don't, I don't think you need a motion, and this is why I said it that way, because it's already expendable money, so the committee already has the right to spend that money. However, I didn't want the conflict to interest, so Phil and Dave are both correct.
Well, I spent over $700 at the, or $800 at this event, so geez. I had a.
What'd you buy?
And you skipped over my wife's tent. A lot of beer and, um, and a, and some, uh, some vendor, uh, vendor Christmas presents, you know, they had some nice stuff.
Yeah, I heard they had a lot of great stuff down there. I, I should check those vendors out more.
All right, so we'll bring this up at the next meeting. Yes.
Now, my only thought to that is I just would like to question that. I'm wondering if you do decide to do that. Maybe it may just be due diligence to just go ahead and do that motion. Um, only because yes, Coventry Day is technically, you're paying vendors, you're paying, um, hired people, you know, like the radios, the bands, the food, different items of that, which typically would fall underneath a normal Coventry Day activity. But when you're turning around and using some of those funds to actually pay residents who works at that has a compensation. Um, to me, I mean, I'm just sort of thinking liability wise as far as for the town, I think transparency. Yes, we have that overage. If you want to go ahead and do that, we have the extra money within the Coventry Day line item. Just put it out there that you know what, we appreciated all the work that was done. We would like to compensate the workers. We have an overage in this account. This is where it's gonna come from. Just for transparency reasons, I feel you folks should. It may be overzealous, but.
I, I agree with Deb. Let me check with the committee members. When we come back at the next meeting, we'll have that information and then we can make.
Okay.
Her, her, her sentiment and motion is correct. So for open and.
Okay, so we'll discuss again. And again, thank you, everybody who made the event possible. VLCT Annual Meeting Appointment of Voting Member.
We need to appoint a voting member. Last couple of years, it's been Amanda, but it could be any select board member or frankly, any town resident.
Is that the one Josh was gonna do and then he bailed on us?
It's the September 29th Annual Meeting of VLCT, I think it is.
I think that was the one guy Josh, Josh was doing, then he bailed the month later. Yeah.
But it's been Amanda the last couple of years. It's voting on the operating principles of VLCT. It's pretty dry and done.
Um, I think it makes sense, but I, I do. Dave, do you think it makes sense for Ned to be that?
Sure. Sure.
I'll make the motion to appoint Ned as the, uh, voting member for the town of Coventry, the VLCT Annual Meeting.
So, all is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, Australian Ballot Article for Town Meeting 2022. So, who's explaining this?
I will explain.
Somebody needs to explain it.
Yeah, let's find it. To, to get, to, we had, based on the emergency powers that we had for the prior election.
Able to do it.
Here in Australia ballot, we had a, a attendant, say attendant, so, but a voter turnout of substantially more than we usually do for
But it finished.
For a town meeting day.
Deb, did you get those numbers that I asked?
Oh, no, I forgot.
We'll get to it. It, it was, it was like, let's, uh, and I'm just spouting off what I remember.
No, I know.
It's like 1,200 was this year and most years were in the 600 range. It was a lot different. It was.
Yeah, it was five times.
Yeah, it was a lot different. It was, it wasn't like 20% more. We'd say, uh, good weather, whatever. It was a lot more. It was like 50% more. That's, that's a ton more people. So we should really consider putting on the ballot for next town meeting or for a future special election. Going with Australian ballot.
Changing to Australian ballot.
Changing to Australia ballot.
So.
And, but, yeah, for the, and because of our performance in the recovery from COVID, we will be getting or potentially getting, Deb, interrupt me if I'm incorrect or saying incorrectly. We'll be getting accounting machine, balloting machines. So, so one of the big expenses was the damn machines were gonna cost five grand plus updates and the other stuff that goes with it. That's okay.
I said, I saw Deb's book today.
Yeah. Deb has her hand up.
His long, very long book.
Yeah, I know. Actually, no, I'll just make that correction because we do not need to use the APRA funds anymore for the tabulator. Um, technically Vermont Secretary of State is going to provide to us a brand new free tabulator, free of charge, which does have the purchase price of around $12,000. Um, the only thing I need to do is get my BCA to go ahead and vote, um, to accept us to get that tabulator and use that tabulator. And so I do have that BCA meeting that's scheduled for next Wednesday night. I'll put that plug in for all of you to please attend 5:30 at the community center, uh, to go ahead and put that vote in for us to be able to acquire that free piece of equipment, um, which is technically going to, um, save us a lot of time as far as with the hand counting and everything for every election. Um, again, yes, there's going to be some fees with the programming costs, but all federal and state's, um, elections, the Secretary of State's office will go ahead and help pay half of what that cost is. We will be able to use it for our town meeting and going along with the same scope for what you folks are talking as far as possibly requesting to have us be an Australian ballot town would be perfect because we'd be able to go ahead and get the programing for our own ballots and we'd be able to use the tabulator for our local elections as well.
So the, uh, I skimmed through that email because it was so long.
It was exciting.
The programming, that happens at every election, so the, each state and federal election would be covered half by the state. And then Dave, if we started using it for the town meeting, it would be about the same cost, reaches the same thing for a town meeting.
Correct. Currently, right now, for each election, it's approximately $1,500 for the programming. You've probably noticed on the ballots before, you have a lot of the barcode and that's on the side. Um, within that barcode is actually what the tabulator reads in order to determine who's being voted for. We always receive our ballot that always has the barcode and we don't do anything with it because we don't have a tabulator.
Yeah.
Um, so for every single election, there's a company that the Secretary of State contracts with. They go in, they do all this programming. Would this be a new technology? I don't know if they would have to come on site and install that, or if they would somehow be able to do it remotely. Um, and then, like you said, for our local elections, we would reach out to that vendor, state, hey, here's our ballot. They would go through, produce the data image for it, put it into our machine. And then, like I said, technically, once the poll closes at seven o'clock, you basically go over, you push a button and it will spit out a piece of paper that says, you know, um, select board member Scott Ryer, you know, 250 votes, John Mill, 178 votes. So that's a lot of the counting that we do not have to do at the very end. Like I said, the only thing is if there's any writings, then yes, it's gonna go ahead and take what it can for counting. Those areas that there's a write-in, it's gonna actually kick that ballot over into a certain section of that machine where we would then have to take those out and then go through the process of actually having to tally those because the machine can't actually do that themselves. It would be awesome if it could, but at this point in time, it can't. Um, but yeah, no, I just thought that was just really awesome news because in the past, if you had over 1,000 registered voters, you were entitled to receive a, technically a free tabulator. Um, but the Secretary of State has changed that. And even though with our last purge we did, we're actually down to about 600 and about 60 voters right now. It doesn't matter if our BCA approves that we want to be a tabulator town, they'll go ahead and furnish that equipment to us free of charge. And like I said, you're looking at close to about a $12,000 machine.
That meeting's on the 29th, not this Wednesday, next Wednesday?
Correct, next Wednesday. Yep, the 29th.
So, this isn't maybe, I, I think it's a great thing. I just want to understand the costs with it. The cost for ballots, is that any different than normal then? I know that's a lot different because we went that route anyways. But overall.
And it costed us $500 for the ballots.
Okay.
So for every election, um, regardless, if we went with a tabulator or not, Scott wanted, or you folks decide you want to go to Australian ballot for the town, you are still gonna have that ballot cost regardless. Um, you need to remember going forward for all federal, or I should say the November elections, your general elections, um, the Secretary of State's office is going to handle mailing out all of those ballots to every registered non-challenged voter. Um, they've already stated they're doing that for everyone. So right there, we don't, we're not even gonna have the cost of those ballots. When it gets to the state level, um, the state's gonna go ahead and provide those ballot costs to us anyhow. They provide the envelopes for all the federal and the state elections. The only time it's really going to incur us for a cost is, like you said, Phil, when we use it for our own local elections. We're gonna have to start paying for our own, um, absentee envelopes anyhow. That is the change that the Secretary of State's office is putting into effect. Prior to, we would just use our leftovers from their elections. We are no longer allowed to do that. We have to go ahead and purchase our own supply. So you're looking at some increased cost that we are gonna be expecting anyhow. Um.
Oh, you're saving in time after.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, like Martha can probably go ahead and contend as well. Like I said, I'm usually there at the office at six o'clock that morning. Polls don't open up till eight. Generally, I'm dropping Martha off at one o'clock in the next morning, 1:00, 1:30. So I mean, you're talking a long time because post polls at seven o'clock, I usually have eight people there going through counting. They're going through tallying up every single section. They're giving it to me, which then I have to go through and put it into an Excel spreadsheet, tally it up for every single section, which then I have to take it, go put it into the VEN software that night for the state recording. And we gotta go through and tally it up through there. So you've got, what, three different processes right there of tallying we need to do where seven o'clock tabulator, push a button. Boom, here's all your figures besides the write-ins that we have to do manually.
Yep. Good. Do you, so I'm, I'm personally interested in having a a special meeting in, in possibly, so switching gears, switching gears now to
get back to what we were, we're talking to Australian for this year's town meeting.
Yeah, I would almost side away from that only for the fact that you know what, hopefully this town meeting is gonna be, hopefully, a normal town meeting where everybody can come and attend in person. I really think we should leave this for town meeting and for residents to be able to vote that day. Um, this way, they know town meeting, there's gonna be articles, there's stuff that we really want to put, you know, in front of them. I think it should be kept that way instead of doing a special meeting. Only because, like I said, I know with the ATV, and when that originally passed, there was some residents who were very upset with how that ended up going through being a special meeting way. This way, you know what, you're doing your due diligence, you're following the normal process, what we would with any other article would want to put on the warning. Put it on for town meeting, go through, let the residents who come support it. Um, vote their opinion. Hopefully, they will vote for it, which would be awesome to try to gather, you know, enough votes. I just think for us, we should probably just do some due diligence and from now until then, really try to promote, this is what we would like to do and this is why we would like to do it. And definitely have it within the annual report as well. Maybe it should have its own one single page. You know what, this is what we're looking to. You know what, this is what we're looking to do. This is why we want to do it. How is this going to benefit you? Um, you know, really get that information out there to them for a town meeting day, but that's my perspective.
I agree with that.
In a long, about one.
I think.
Can I weigh in on this? I, I um, I want to say that I support Deb. I think that you should wait because holding a special, special meetings and then a special election, you're pulling your BCA back in because you have to have your polls open for that special election. Um, if you do it before town meeting because it has to be approved um, by a ballot vote by the entire town um, to change town meeting that day. So and, and I think Deb makes some really good points and I definitely support her. It's, it's a long tedious process for one person, two people to go through. Um, just very lucky Deb and I get along so well and we push through. Um, and also I just want to say, so the new cost with the tabulator that, that you wouldn't normally see if we didn't have that tabulator is the absentee ballot envelopes, the postage, the ballot printing, and then the um, the counting software. Right, Deb? That's it?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
But, but I feel, I feel getting the input from, you know, probably around four hundred and fifty town members versus a hundred and thirty is, is, is more valuable. Um, it is more valuable because just because a lot of people can't make it for years and years and years. I never came, I had to work. Well, you know.
But you can change the date, not the date, the time that you actually have town meetings. So instead of us having that ten AM, we could do like what a lot of the other towns do and actually hold town meetings starting at five thirty at night, just like what you do. Well, your select board meeting start at six. But have town meetings start at five thirty, which gives a lot more people the opportunity to be able to come and be able to voice that vote. But taking that into consideration, if we do go that route, we possibly may want to look at holding town meeting over at the school just for size-wise. Um, you've got all the bleachers, plus you're going to have a lot of the floor space and depending on the current COVID situation, hopefully by then maybe things will start evening out a little bit. Uh, but just with the anticipation that we may actually bring out more people, I think it would be prudent for us to hold it at a larger facility of that nature. And if we need to incorporate some of like the library or some of the classrooms, if we happen to overfill the gym area, just have the mechanisms in place, the school should have the equipment already there. We can zoom in those different rooms to the gym. They may not be in the gym, but at least they would still have the access and the means to be able to communicate and ask questions just like if they were in the gym.
I agree with moving it. I agree with the thought of moving it. I don't think it's going to make a difference. It's going to make a difference in who shows up. It's not going to make numbers. Your numbers are still going to be the same. And the other problem is, is town meeting is, and this is where Australian ballot comes in, without absentee, same, same way that you know. This is where Australian ballot comes in with town meeting. That's vacation week. People are either still gone or getting back. They aren't going to go to town meeting. Um. I don't, I, I've had this conversation with many people about changing it and that's consensus is you change it, good, get a different um, uh, whatever the word is there, people showing, showing up, you're going to get the young people show up and compared to the old people where during the day it's the old people, working, not working and working. Yeah. So I don't, I don't see numbers changing, demographics changing. Exactly. I, I agree with that. That's what I've heard from other towns is yeah, they've tried changing it and you might get twenty or thirty more people or less people either way. Different, it's different.
Different demographic.
Different demographics.
Numbers, different demographics.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so Scott, I totally support what you're saying. I think with absence ballots, more people get their voices heard. However, my concern is it's about a hundred days to actually have a townwide meeting and meet all of your criteria and that's with putting a lot of stress on your election officials and your poor clerk. So that's where I was, that's where Deb and I are coming from by just saying to incorporate it in town, in for town meeting, but you can hold as many informational meetings to get that out and not do any binding business there, just kind of over inform people of why you're doing it and, you know. But to actually warn a meeting and warn an election, I think that puts a lot on, like I said, the Board of Civil Authority and the election officials in such a short time when town meeting's going to be like within.
Around the corner.
Of that.
Right, right? Yeah, the problem is, the problem is, is because ATV happened during COVID, we were able to do a ballot for that. You're going to be doing an on-floor vote. You're not going to get to the on-floor vote for special meeting.
So the ATV was actually a petition and if your citizens petition, you're required to hold a ballot vote. So that's kind of, kind of an irregular.
Yeah. Okay. I knew it was a ballot vote, I just couldn't remember.
That was prior to COVID too.
Well, yes. It would be nice if we could do a ballot vote and mail it to every town member to see if they want to switch it to a ballot vote, but but we can't do that, you can't do that, right?
No.
Because then you'd be getting the input of other, you know, because like you, like you were thinking.
Actually, that, that, that's. We can send out an info, oh, say.
It's an informational.
Informational ballot and get a.
Get people to come, but that's, that's the downfall. Uh, hopefully it's not a downfall. Hopefully people who come to town meeting anyways would agree with this. But that is the downfall that you have to do as a town meeting that people who would really benefit to come and say. Right, because obviously if the people are here at town meeting, they come every year, they want to come, they want to the meeting, they don't, they know the numbers, they know the odds, they're like, why would I want to have all these other people don't even come to the meeting? They don't want to take the time out of their day to come and hear what they have to say. But they need to understand that it's not going to want to. Right. Can't look at it that way. I was the same vote as you. I couldn't come to town meeting and there's a lot of people working that way. They don't get the day off like some people.
Yeah.
So.
So I have mixed emotions on that. Um. Am I on?
Go ahead.
I have mixed emotions about the Australian ballot. I, I do really like the fact that you have a lot more people voting on town issues. Uh, the trouble is, and I've noticed this with the uh, school is we lose a lot of valuable input from citizens um, at the meetings who bring up valid points and some of it is, uh, does become poorly worded too. I really have mixed emotions about it. Are we talking here to change immediately to Australian ballot? Are we talking about putting on, are we talking just to put it on an article for a town meeting?
It needs to be put on an article for town meeting. We, it's either we do a special meeting prior to town meeting this year and do it or put it on as an article. I, I agree with Deb, but it should not be done prior, it should be an article.
Yeah, we might be dictated by COVID again with the uh, recent surge and make no mistake about it, it's real and it's happening again. So and, and, and in that comment, think to last year and what, what a short timeframe we were able to go to Australian ballot.
Yeah.
And that definitely could happen again this year based on COVID. If COVID is back in the same, you know, realm and Vermont Secretary of State, they go ahead and they decide that, you know what, we're going to go ahead and enact the exact same acts that they did last year for us for elections. We may be able to go ahead and go that route again and that would be great. But it's just if COVID stays maintained, chances are we're not going to have those special acts that we can automatically go ahead and just enforce on our end.
So if, if that was the case and this town meeting was Australian ballot because of COVID, would, we would put an article in there to see if we could, so in a sense, if we were really on our game, we would have done it last year. We would have had a chance to get the vote.
Yeah.
But why don't we discuss this again?
Yeah.
I'll put this on the agenda for the second meeting in November because then we'll have at least a month or so on some additional time to see what's going on. But I, I would say we should.
Yep.
I've spoken about this, put this on several agendas to talk about it, just so we can continue to understand where we're to be and what's the voters in town day early March next year.
Yep. So and I agree with David's thought on the input from the town. And I think if we did, i- if, if we're doing, we do go through with it. There needs to be informational meetings. There needs to be informational meetings prior to articles getting put on, like would be board meetings prior to articles getting put on that those opinions and voices could be heard at that moment in time.
Right.
To be put that way.
Yeah.
And it may end up being that, okay, and I've thought of this with the ATV ordinance is you have a couple of articles per issue that is dependent, one article is dependent on the next, which I don't know, will that work that way in an Australian ballot?
Well, I'm not quite sure on your context as far as what do you mean?
Each, each ballot item needs to be independent and you vote yes or no and it pass or fails, you can't say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only thing, the only thing that will be combined together will just be your appropriation request. Those we go ahead and combine all together so it's all or nothing, but everything else should be its own separate.
Where I was going is I think there's been town meetings that we've had articles that is, and I think it's more for positions, appointed positions. It is depending on how this one's voted on will be that if this article.
Like when we removed the office of the listers.
Right. Yeah. Right. So.
We had that as one item and then we had to hire a town assessor has another item based on, and just like for Kate for a delinquent, um.
So I guess my, my thing of you might have to have a couple of articles for each would not work, but I, where I was going, doing meetings and putting out there saying if you but you need to come to these meetings, we're going to have one meeting for this particular article we're talking about. Or whatever, and that's.
I, which we have one meeting a month in November from January to February.
For a separate article.
Hey, this is coming up. You really need to get involved, get your, your two cents in.
And this, this was going on the fact that what David was mentioning on getting the input is you do go this direction is, I'm curious that's how we should really do it.
But I wouldn't almost go ahead and do each meeting just on a separate article because you're going to have individuals who might be able to attend Wednesday night for this one article, but they want to have input. You folks really need to get your um, warning sort of like prefigured out, not exact, but this is a draft so that they can see exactly what items are going to be listed on it. And then put that out for them and then whatever, when we ever have the informational meetings, they should be allowed to ask questions on any single one of those articles because that's the time when they are able to attend that meeting. And if you want for this particular instance, I mean, you're only required to have one informational meeting within ten days. We go over and above and have three. We could go over above and maybe let's have six. We can have a couple, two weeks before, have three the week before. We always have one usually like the night before. And my suggestion would be is I agree with Data Gallup where a lot of people do like to come, they like to socialize, they like to, you know, we have the meals, whatever. If we get this to go to Australian ballot where we no longer have the annual meeting that day, then you know what, how about incorporate the night before? Do an informational meeting with, you know, a supper for our residents. So they're still sort of getting that hometown town meeting day feeling and still able to socialize and still sort of make it feel like it's sort of a town meeting. They're getting their say or asking their questions put in. But it's just not happening on town meeting day. So we can still.
So I, I think the school budget, uh, the school informational meeting will give you an example of how that doesn't work.
But that's the school though.
You don't have, don't, you only have fifteen people attending.
Oh, we don't even have.
And my basis, my base of uh, town meeting was nothing to do with the socialization while that, while that is a big thing. I think uh, sometimes emotion is good and bad in a, uh, in decision-making and I think those emotions need to be heard in a meeting. And I worry about the future of town meeting being watered down through, through Australian ballot. I once again love the fact that voters, you have more voters in there. But um, when I look at that school meeting and you see nobody there, you basically don't, you see fifteen to twenty people there total. And is that the uh, type of input we should be having? And I don't think it is. And it kind of, I, I've noticed as a school has gone to Australian ballot, it really waters downtown meeting fifty percent in the fact that there's no uh, give and take at the meetings. I think it takes a lot of uh, I think it, I think it takes a lot of thinking away from where things are done. It's just my personal feeling.
Yeah. I think you're going to be seeing, there's going to be a lot of towns. I think COVID has really made a huge change uh, for all the states with all elections. Um, I think you're going to see a lot of towns who never did Australian ballot is now seriously looking at going to Australian ballot. There's a lot of your bigger cities and other towns, um, like Barton, they go through and they have their Australian ballot. Um, I'm not actually quite sure if they have Australian ballot, I'll retract that, but they definitely, they do have their tabulator. Um, I think you're going to find that there's a lot of towns who may be starting to switch over to that avenue. One to help increase um, the number of votes that are coming in. But I think the big part, and especially with the school, is just a communication. In years past, they only had one informational meeting. It was always the night before. You have a lot of residents in this town who do not have children, who are paying taxes. So they really don't get involved in with the school. Um, we still have parents who do have kids. Some of them still don't get involved with the school, but I think it's just because they see the school, they see how it's running, they see that it's running well. They don't really have concerns. They see what the budget is. They feel the budget is within a reason for what it needs to be. I think our biggest piece with everything is getting that communication piece out, really promoting it out to our residents so that they know, you know what, these are going to be our informational dates. We want you here asking questions, participating. I think the more that we make it inviting for them, the more they're going to actually come out and maybe at some of these other informo, informational meetings we have, maybe on three of them, you know what, let's go ahead, let's provide some food, let's contract out with Travis Casey um, to hold a dinner or whatnot. I think you're going to end up seeing some people who, that's going to help to draw in people, help to draw in some communication. I mean, definitely some stuff that David is saying is true. I don't even know if we even have fifteen people who usually goes to our informational meetings. But it's, it's all what the people really want to discuss, which is the hard piece. And if you're getting something that they really want to talk about, they're going to be there to talk about it. And if they feel that it's not of interest of theirs, they're just not going to show up.
I was where I was going with, I think, having meetings prior to the articles and the agenda and the warning even being done is to get people involved at that point to do that discussing, that does get done at town meeting and get more people involved. Even I think the thing that frustrates me more is that people don't show up to these normal meetings when you're discussing, you know, put on the town, town articles anyway for town meeting and then it gets even more heated because they're like, well, why is this on?
Yeah.
Oh, it. I know you can't.
It's a double edged sword.
Uh, you can't win for sure, but all right, well, we'll just have more discussions on this because we talked about this for tonight and yeah, we don't, we need talk about it again. Thank you for everybody's input. Platts, memorials and awards along the community center. So.
I'm going to ask that we table this for a future meeting. Richard, Richard is not here.
What's he working on, by the way?
Yeah, uh.
Is he working on something for this? Is he working on something for this?
He is, but I don't know what it is.
Okay.
I know that there were other people with the competition, they found.
That too, because during that email that came through.
Yeah. Colleen had been in the back store room for whatever reason and found. Things for her parents that were back there for the Coventry Fire District. There've been other people, there've been. Thing that came up in. I can outside. A different back inside, so.
That is really cutting out.
Yeah, I can't hear a word.
Different with you, we're about the same.
Yeah, I'll move closer, is that better? Uh, thank you, okay. Uh, Richard Luscher had some, and some other people had some strong opinions on this, we need to gather more information before we discuss this, just so. We get everyone's fair input on this, cuz I know Carleen was upset about Coventry Fire District stuff related to her parents. That was out back gathering dust, Richard Luscher was concerned about other stuff that wasn't out on the front of the building. So we need to put this all together so we get a consolidated thing and get a, a clear indication of. How many awards and stuff we want, I know David was concerned about some other ones, so there's more stuff to add out there in terms of. A twenty or thirty years of service that needs to be given space for other people, so. There's, this needs to be, have a plan and come forward and just not discussions on. Throwing things up on the wall because people want it there. Thank you.
All right, so we'll talk about it again. We have to lay them out, we have to. You need to lay them out and see, and then we'll look at the wall space.
And there's an outs, we'd want some stuff outside, so.
And the special, that specialist.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So on that note, we were supposed to get an info- information board. That we voted on and I'm pretty sure we paid for it and I have not seen it yet.
Yeah, me too.
Deb, we paid BCI for that board, right?
Where is it? It's been a year.
I didn't even know we had ordered a board.
It was prior to you being here, that's how long it's been and we sent, they sent the invoice and. David, you haven't heard anything about it, have you? That's Gallup. Yeah, but he can unmute himself.
No, he's, he's there. I think he stepped away, I heard.
Yeah, he must be stepped away.
I thought I heard what was a door click shot.
What's that, Phil?
Have you, have you heard anything, so we. No.
I haven't heard anything from BCI.
Can you follow up with that because there is, there was a. And maybe Deb, you can pull the invoice or find it.
No, that I absolutely can, cuz I remember seeing that because I know I had posed that question to someone. But I think it was either to Ned or to David, I think it was right at the transition between Amanda.
Yeah, it was right there.
And was like, what is this for? But I do know, um, they were closed down quite a while because of COVID, because they were hit with COVID. Several different times, so I think they may be a little bit behind, but I'm wondering now, some things maybe have gotten lost under the scenes. Cuz I know I sent in a request and I have not received anything back in regards to my request that I sent prior to the first time I've been closing with COVID.
We'll find out where.
It was an information board and I, we should discuss where it needs to go more, I still feel like it's a lot more apart, but.
Yeah.
So if you give me. I'll look into it. If somebody sends me the BCI email, I'll, I'll touch base with uh Mike Lacoff and see what's going on.
About where we wanna put it and then we can pick on which, which plaques should go in it, which ones should stay in here.
Right, yeah.
I also, uh, I also would like to note for the record, uh, to my knowledge, there was only um. One award given out by the Secretary of State this year due to uh COVID and that was to uh longtime uh sleddman Bradley Maxwell. And I'd like to see that man up on the wall.
Uh, we haven't gotten any notice from that and I, I had heard the same thing and I thought uh Jim condos would have contacted us. Literally weeks ago, yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a comment to that, that generally you folks were mentioning the plaques on the wall for service. How that works is Secretary of State only does that every five years. And what they do is they'll go ahead, they'll reach out to the different towns. And they'll say, okay, do you have anybody that has reached this level of certification? If so. We need to provide their name and their years of service, they go through, prepare that certificate. Then they go and mail that certificate to that individual. And then if that individual wants to go ahead and bring that certificate in for us to post on the wall, then we can at that time. Um, that is how that process is supposed to work. I don't, I haven't been here for five years, I do not know when the last time that was. Done or completed, I'm not sure if COVID has sort of put a little bit of a lag on their. Mind scene in trying to get some of that stuff updated. Um, but that's generally how that process goes.
So that may be, but um I'm quite sure, and I think I could find my email from Mike Maricot. That an exception was made this year for Bradley Maxwell and.
Nice.
And I would really like to see that up on that wall.
Yeah.
Once we get it, we'll put it up, that's.
So let's reach out to the Secretary of State and see what's going on with that and maybe include Michael in that email.
Okay.
I had, uh, are we done? With other business?
So that was it for that one, yeah, that's the last thing.
I'd just like to add something, um. I was looking at the Act two fifty regulations and I believe, um, I believe there was something in there. Talking towards uh downtown designations. Uh, which our community is covered by, I would like uh Ned or um Brian to look into that. And see what those regulations are. They are a type of zoning, uh, a form of it as far as aesthetics. And things like that. Um, when we see a project like Mr. Tangways uh having a devastating effect on a neighbor. Uh, putting gravel on our property, I would like to know what our legal rights are on that and. If that's some, something we can pursue through Act two fifty with the downtown de- designation.
The, the one key thing there is we are not a downtown designation, we are a village designation. Very different. Criteria, yeah. Village designation is more of a. I'll say geographic designation, it has some funding opportunities, very little regulatory opportunity.
So just.
About the Richard Moore, Richard Amori on that?
I will check.
I was under the assumption it was a downtown designation, I went with Amanda to get uh.
If it's a village designation.
Definitely a village designation and very different, and downtown would have to be substantially higher population and slightly bigger area. Yeah, it's really Newport, yeah, Swanton, places like that.
When I put an addition on my shop in Coventry where there's no zoning. Every time, like I'm doing one right now, I have to go through Act two fifty.
Yeah.
So I'm not certain about storage units, but I would think that would fall under the same criteria.
We'll check, yeah.
I think in looking at the uh, I think the only thing I saw under the assessor's uh, the office was the um. Fire permit. And there were, there were, actually were reg- regulations for some of that stuff.
Oh, for, okay. You do still have fire.
I will check into it.
I didn't get a fire permit.
You're, you're just, you're just doing gravel, you're not having the closed, this is a closed structure.
No, and it's slow structure. Maybe there isn't, I don't know. I didn't have.
I think it has to do with, this is just my opinion, uh, other people's property, you have insurance, you're not insuring somebody else's property.
What was it posted? If it wasn't posted, I have to post it, it was.
It was never posted, we never received any information.
Because you were a neighbor. So like neighboring.
We got what, two or three for the airport, we got yours, we got, uh, there's another one up there, we put them all up.
Is that just businesses?
No, it's any, anybody.
Right, no, that's what I'm asking, is that just businesses or residents?
Everybody, it's whether you fall under Act two fifty criteria or not.
I'm just trying to remember, cuz I know I did the Act two fifty pay a paper work for that first building. And I'm trying to recall, we maybe had obtained permit and rights for three buildings, even though we only built one. At that one, at that point in time. And if that's the case, then you folks would not receive notification of additional buildings being built because it was already previously approved.
But it only, it only lasts cuz mine was pre- previously approved, what I, what I bring fifteen years ago. And it only stays good for like two years, then you have to, it's easy to get. It's easy to get reapproval, but then it still has to.
Go through the normal circuit.
Six dollars instead of like this. Seventeen hundred and then, then the neighbors need to be notified and.
Yeah.
For a lot of our other sites, it was the exact same thing, we get approval, like especially the other one in Coventry for six units. We only built like two, a couple of years later, we built another two and then a couple of years later, we had built another two.
So you're saying originally you had one for three, not four?
That very well could be, that's a long time ago, I'm trying to remember. Um, but I know for a lot of our land that we had for the storage units. We had always gone out to request the max amount that we could put on that parcel for future development.
So I would, I would believe that he definitely has a pre-existing Act two fifty permit, but if you didn't get a letter.
We'll check.
If it wasn't a paper, then probably he didn't.
We'll, we'll find out, we'll verify whether it was or did or did not, we'll find out what that could is, report back next meeting.
We'll buy in a couple.
We done, kid?
Nope, warrants.
Warrants. The warrants, I've gone through them all. I looked at them all, so. I just wanted to note two things. I was looking through the sheriffs. And this was prior to then coming the last time. It, I noticed a bunch on one oh five. In July, so that, like I said, that, that's why I said this was prior to her coming last time and we reiterated it, so. Let's just keep an eye on state roads. On their reports.
I have a brand new report sitting on my email and I will confirm that, you know, just nicely saying. Town roads, not state roads, a lot of those times, if you look, there's an additional category in there.
Something else that happened.
Yeah, there's something else that happened.
Which I saw that.
Or it's the school officer coming to school or going home from school. And discovered something, yeah.
And I know she did say that, I just, I just wanna point that out, the other one is the Comcast bill debt, if I don't think of it. And I just wanna throw this in your head, watch the next one, it should be less.
Okay.
I uh went and redid the, redid a contract. Um, which got us, we went from the internet, from fifty meg, fifty by. Five, I think it was, up to two hundred by twenty-five. Megabits down, up and down and changed the, what do we have, three phone lines? Changed the three phone lines, so they're all mobility lines, which give us, gives us more features, so if we did end up closing again. Ned or one of us could easily be answering and making calls from our cell phones. Um, same with Deb or David.
And it is, and it is faster.
We had it for Coventry Day.
I just wanna say FYI, we have a fair number of. People, I'll say, put nicely, congregating just after worktimes out in the.
I do think I have restricted to five by two for each device.
Yeah, they're, they're just doing emails and conversing.
It didn't work very good for me out here in the parking lot. I, oh, I need to look at it cuz I tried connecting it, didn't work for me.
Works better.
And then we got rid of the fax line, so all told, I think it was somewhere around seventy or eighty dollar savings for. Two years and then it's like fifty, or that was the one, I don't remember how much, totally, but. Um, just watch that, there's, and the next bill might be prorated, so it may be a little higher too.
Okay.
Cuz the bill, the bill happened on the twentieth, August twentieth, and I signed the contract on the twenty-sixth, so.
I have a note in my calendar to check it when it comes in, and it shouldn't be coming in.
Yes.
Next couple, next couple of days. Yeah.
So that was that one, um, Deb, I was gonna log in, but you have your computer or somebody else. I have a Beamer's check that does not have a warrant.
Really?
Yep.
No, you said have a warrant, that should be on one of the warrants. Warrants.
Okay, well, let me look through them all again, but I thought I checked them all.
Because you should actually have it for two months because that should be July and August.
So, okay, I will look because there were a couple that I just skipped over. What is, what does Heritage Memorials do for us? That was the uh cemetery thing. Contract, we had to do twenty-four hundred. At when it was signed and then the directors played out.
Because I had to order some parts, so basically the deposit is for the material that they had to order. Any of their work, their labor will be held at the completion of the job.
And David Barlow, were you able to, um. Or you'd know this answer, Deb, the bounty guy. How does, is, is he all set?
Oh, no, absolutely, this um, David ended up speaking with his wife, his wife called the accountant, the accountant, the coroner confirmed everything that we did was exactly correct. And according to the books and David mailed the check back out to them and if they want a deposit, get paid, they can deposit, get paid. That's basically it.
Good, well, good, thank you.
It's done.
You don't find. Sorry, Deb, no warrant.
No, there's gonna be one. Remember you received two different emails.
Then there's, there's, there's no Beamer's warrant, there's taxes, there's two taxes, is it on the same warrant as the taxes?
No, 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 this would be a general warrant, remember I sent you some on the thirteenth? Because I thought you're still have a meeting the night of the thirteenth.
So is it part of the big, big general warrant? Because it's all.
Yeah, probably go look at the big one on the thirteenth, it should be near the bottom.
Well, separated by itself, that's why.
Well, why did you do that for?
I didn't do it, that's.
It was all together when I gave it to Ned.
On the third. I didn't mess it up.
I didn't touch anything, Deb, I handed them the file.
Oh, and then there's some South Bay, two South Bay invoices missing too.
No.
I will go through this again.
Okay.
Dave Gallup.
Okay, there it is.
Dave Gallup, I have a, a huge invoice from Pike, I'll. Email you to set up a time we can go over it and we can do the park, the, the Jim Cobb Park stuff also at the same time.
Twenty-two eighty-four, twenty-two eighty-four, Beamer's right there, three, seven, sixty-one, so what are these checks? Sixteen twenty-nine, there's a completely different one here, Deb.
You should have two from Beamer's.
I do, there's one on the big, there's one, there, there's one on the eight thirteen, while there's three. One check with three transfers, payroll transfers.
Because there should have been a small one for July and then a large one.
All the checks here, so this is the Beamer's DB on here, look, it's twice. Down here, problem. Yeah, so this is a different time. This is a different time frame. She's missing a warrant.
You sure did combine them both together into one?
No.
No.
Both checks are not listed consecutively?
No.
How many weeks are listed for that one warrant? How many weeks are listed for that one warrant?
So the one that's not here is for July ninth and July twenty-third.
Then you folks have another warrant.
That is either hanging out by itself and those checks are just here?
I'll run to my office, make sure there's nothing.
This is already signed. This check's signed. So maybe this is in here by mistake and handing it over to you.
That was a prior warrant to go with that check to say postage.
I bet you, yeah. What was?
I knew both checks are gonna be mailed out together.
So you gotta put it together.
Oh, oh, so it is her.
You found the other.
Well, not really.
Oh.
Previously approved, Deb. I'm just trying to save the town money with postage.
Well, this means the town clerk should show up in person at every meeting.
Exactly.
No, not town clerk, town bookkeeper.
Right here, but right here, here it is.
Town clerk.
Yeah, here you go.
Town bookkeeper.
Okay, alright, so we're just, oh, minutes, minutes.
Minutes, yes.
David Gallup.
No, no, hang on. We, we do need a motion to approve the warrants. We don't have a motion.
I make a motion.
Let's go.
So all, all is in favor of approving the warrants, say aye.
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 Okay, minutes.
Minutes, approval of the minutes of August sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Um it was me and Phil here. And as you were on Zoom, Phil left for fire, so I make a motion that we approve.
No, no, that was July twelfth and that was the twelfth that, that Phil left for the fire.
So do we want to approve those?
Yeah, but it's, yes, but it would be only you and Dave Gallup who will hear sufficient amount of time.
I'm talking about approving the minutes of July twelfth first.
Aye.
So, okay, aye.
Aye.
So you're not, you refuse yourself. Prove the minutes from August sixteen, twenty twenty-one. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes August sixteen, twenty twenty-one. So will voters in favor?
Aye.
Now I gotta, now I gotta prove to Deb that there are two.
No. The next item.
Motion to adjourn. Second, all is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. You stay here, Deb.
I am.
I don't care.
Five eight two.
South Bay. So this is the full, five sixty-three six. One ninety-four sixty-six. Yeah. Invoice eighty-three forty-eight.